And welcome to the Milton Planning Board's eighth meeting of fiscal year 2017. I am Brian Furz, Chairman of the Planning Board. I'm going to ask my colleagues to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
I'm Alex Whiteside, I'm a member of the board.
Michael Kelly, a member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Julia Getman-Clark.
Tim Swinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Cheryl Tagheas, Member.
Thank you. We have several public hearings this evening, some old business. We have our next meeting minutes, excuse me, next meeting dates we're going to talk about in just a moment. Approval of minutes, what dates are you seeking?
The last seven.
Once we discuss last meeting. Did we receive some of them just today in our packet? Oh, okay.
No.
Okay. Any changes?
In what?
Have you had a chance to review what we got?
You may remember when we last discussed the minutes.
May not.
That there were, there was, we each expressed some views on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Correct.
And I said, get, tell Julia, review it, and tell Julia to make sure that they got your position right, and they've all done that.
That was from September 22nd.
Right.
Yep.
So your revisions went into that, but they went around a second time after you set that.
Oh, okay.
The 13th from the last meeting were sent out new last week.
Do we approve those last meeting? We haven't approved those.
No, those were from last meeting.
Yeah.
October 13th, and it's just went out. So you don't have comments on those yet.
I do. I thought that, you know, the only problem was the use of the word road rather than streets, than street, and the Scheller's name under, after Winthropur was misspelled, and it seems to me that the under five new business that we signed a site plan approval for the Fruit Center, but not a Fruit Center sign, as far as I remember.
Okay. Yep, that's correct.
So here are my changes, but, I mean, they're so miniscule, I think that we could, we could approve them.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for Wednesday, September 22nd, 2016, and for Thursday, October 13th, 2016?
As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Any discussion, or any second? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think we're caught up on minutes, correct?
We have approved those September 22nd.
We just did, yes.
Okay.
Yep. So are we caught up, Julia? Is that?
Yeah.
We're done now, through? So that's great news. Okay.
Still under administrative?
Yes, we're still under administrative. We have to go back to meeting dates.
Planning Board Annual Report was in your packet last time. Mr. Whiteside wrote it. Anybody have any comments?
We need the Emily tribute that Tim was supposed to get someone to write.
You want me to do it?
To write, I'm sorry, I don't know what we're writing?
Just a blurb recognizing Emily's service on the planning board.
Right. I mean, this is, this is her chance for history.
Very stood. We need to get it written down.
Around for years to come, and we want to do her justice, so, and this is something that I've mentioned the last time, so don't think that this is just something I'm bringing up tonight, because it's not.
Okay.
Like you would have made, you have suggested.
Is there a way to get the text off of town meeting?
No, 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 I'm using that for something else.
Video?
Like what?
I gave a tribute at town meetings.
Like what?
We could just quickly transcribe what we said at town meeting.
Can we add in Emily's comment? We send it around and add in Emily's comment at the bottom of this?
And we want to welcome April on board.
Okay. We'll send it around again. Do we have to?
This is not a slam dunk, but by any chance, Tim, this is going to be a real challenge for you.
I think I'm up to it.
Try not to have to wait until November 10th to...
Then you probably won't get to get it on November 10th either, because we're about to reschedule that meeting, I think. So why don't we move with?
As.
To be amended.
As to be amended.
To recognize Emily.
Right, with the tribute to Emily and the welcome to April.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody else want to add anything in? All right. My discussion would be, why don't we see what we can get off of the town meeting, because we basically had text for that, and then you're welcome to add to it. Only nice things.
But we, and we don't need a page. Well, I mean, we could go on forever.
We could. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so we have two, our next meeting dates are November 10th. We only have one meeting scheduled in November, and then December 8th is the one after that. I cannot be there on November 10th, and there's been some discussion by the applicants that they'd like a full board the next meeting, so I wanted to see if there might be any other options. Did you have any communication with everybody today?
I have, I got some, some dates from, from April. The issue, there's got to at least be, we advertised two public hearings this week for November 10th. Couldn't change them to a new date, because we didn't know what a new date would be. So there's, there's got to be people around this table on the 10th to at least continue those hearings, even if there's not going to be a meeting.
Well, that doesn't make any sense, so...
Well, I mean, there would be a meeting, but it would be with a forum, and presumably the agenda would be slim.
Yeah, the applicants will have the option to go forward or not. It would be at their discretion at that point.
And if they went forward, they would be effectively saying, please deny this application, since three people could not.
Well, you should have four. You should have four. I think April can be there. So you would be able to go forward, but if they wanted a full board, they'd just have to continue to either December, or we can give them the option, we can discuss now if we want to have a second meeting in November, which we had said we'd defer on until we knew whether or not it was necessary, when we canceled the Thanksgiving meeting.
Well, the 17th would be possible.
Yeah, except I've already, I'm also unavailable that night.
I am not available the 17th. Other days that week I am.
Does the board believe a second meeting is necessary? I guess is the question.
I guess the question is whether the ones that have, that we intended to be tonight, that are deferring to the next, how far out do they want to defer, right?
I think that we should, I mean, we can always cancel the second meeting.
Okay. So...
April says 3rd, 10th, and 17th. Most other dates work for a 17, 7:00 p.m. meeting, but Tuesdays are the best if we want to look at non-Thursday days.
The 15th works for me.
Tuesday, the 15th?
I would prefer the 22nd if people can do it. It's close to Thanksgiving.
I'm leaving.
You're gone?
Yep.
Okay.
On a flight.
16th?
Leaving on a jet plane.
Jet plane. I'm available the 16th.
I'd prefer the 16th if she's available.
Most dates work.
Okay.
16th is Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, yes.
Wednesday.
I think that sounds like a good time.
All right, so we will add another meeting on November 16th.
And I will communicate with the other public hearings that we have on the 10th to see if they're okay with four members, or if they want to continue to the 16th.
It'll be, yeah, I mean, they, yes, that's correct.
Are you...
Would you encourage them to?
You've got the ability to watch a tape to...
I will be able to watch the tape if I, yes, I can watch the tape between the 10th and the...
You're not.
You haven't done that already on the ones that are pending?
No. I think I've been at all, though, I just need to, you would need to confirm that with all the individuals, but I should, I'm pretty sure I haven't missed anything since the summer.
It would be a long night on the 16th if...
If what?
If, if we...
I don't think everyone will defer, but if this, so, we'll see what happens.
On the, yeah, I think that you should not encourage them to...
Yeah, I mean, if there's no... All right.
We have a, under the Ice House proposal, if we're moving stuff from the 10th to the 16th, what we would be doing is having a joint Selectment Planning Board public meeting on the zoning change.
What we've discussed during, have we decided to do that?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Proposing that for the 10th or the 16th.
I don't need to, I don't need two weeks, so I guess we could do either one.
Okay. We'll ask the...
What is this public meeting supposed to do?
Discuss the zoning change to see if there is the stomach for the zoning change in a special town meeting?
Yeah, I think the...
Who would bring it forward?
I think the idea is for the boards to have a single meeting with the Selectment and the Planning Board with the Ice House potential application to discuss who brings it forward, and to allow the public to testify in front of both boards at the same time.
But of course, they wouldn't have the...
They would be testifying on the idea of it.
They'd only have, right, they'd have the idea which is not always a, well, in any event, if the Selectmen...
I think we just invite the Selectmen to the meeting, whichever night it's scheduled for.
Who brings it forward? Is it, is it coming from the Selectmen?
Whose idea was this?
Or does it come from a 200 citizen petition?
Whose idea was this, joint meeting?
I think we, I discussed it with the applicant.
Oh, okay.
Does the Selectmen often bring new zoning forward?
I'll take credit, sure.
All right.
Boy, it has to be new zoning, though.
I think the concern is we have a lot on the agenda right now.
We should do it on the 10th, obviously.
Sounds good.
Discuss that.
All right, well, we'll let, we'll see where that one, wherever they end up on the agenda, you can invite our, the Selectmen, and the Selectmen are more than welcome to join us anytime at the table. All right, we're going to move into citizen speak, because we're behind. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any application, anything, any business that is not before us on the application this evening, which will be the Cluster Development for Highland Street, Pulte Homes, or the Carrick Realty Trust? Two of those are going to be continued tonight as well. Yes, ma'am? How are you? Can I ask what you're speaking about before you start, just in case there's anything on here, so I know?
Sure. The last planning board meeting, it was suggested that the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association submit our membership list.
Perfect. Great. Thanks.
So my name's Laura Beebe. I live at 1514 Canton Avenue. I'm the Secretary of the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association, and I have been sent this evening to submit our most current membership list for the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association. The Blue Hill Neighborhood Association still has reservations about Northland's 64-unit proposal in our neighborhood, including preservation of the Canton Avenue View Shed and neighborhood character, concern with overall density of units, buildings, and traffic and impact on the Blue Hills Reservation and Woolcott Trail. We continue to meet with Northland representatives, engaging in good faith conversations towards a plan that better benefits both neighborhood and town. So here's our list.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just Sloan?
Sorry, we missed you last Wednesday. Hello.
Hello.
I'm Joe Sloan from 55 Concord Ave. I have two things. One is, one is something that some of you may already know about, but I'm going to go forward and be the one with the breaking news that the town of Milton should know about and be proud of, that last night's session of the 2016 Urban Land Institute meeting in Dallas, Texas, April Lamro was presented with a Rising Star Award for her accomplishments. And I'm sure that we'll hear about that and have the opportunity to applaud her for that when she comes back, but I heard about that today and thought it would be really fun to be able to share that.
Thank you for announcing that and for stealing my thunder, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I know I was going to be stealing several people's thunder.
That's fine, I'm glad you did it. I didn't want to forget, so I'm glad it's out there now.
Yeah, I think, I think that, obviously, they're very proud of her accomplishments, so we can be too.
Great, thank you very much.
So I think that's a good thing. I, I'm sure that you know that since the earliest conversations about this possible commercial rezoning of property along Blue Hills Parkway, that my personal focus has been on the Parkway itself, including its historical significance and the state's guidelines for its care. I've spoken to this board a couple of times about the importance, I feel, of examining all the possible impacts to the Parkway from any development, but specifically about a proposed commercial development. Through the, the process of meetings that's been held throughout this year to inform residents about this process, we learned early on that the McKean's attorney had begun conversations with the DCR about possible changes to the Parkway, including maybe signals to allow pedestrian crossings, all the way up to possibly a full-scale intersection with traffic lights on the Parkway. Once, once we learned of that, one of my focuses has been to try to communicate with the DCR, with the Planning Board, with the Selectmen here in Milton, to try and foster a dialogue that could be open to public input and public participation, so that we could all get some of the answers and not just hear feedback from previous meetings that we weren't, we weren't privy to. So I, I made the same request to the Selectmen earlier this year, that they participate and maybe initiate some sort of a public participation in this dialogue with DCR. And in each of those cases, I personally expressed an interest of wishing to participate, to help, to be able to ask questions. A bunch of time has passed, there have been a bunch of meetings over the summer. Last week, I reached out to Anne Marie Fagan, our Town Administrator, simply to ask if she had any awareness of, if there had been any initiatives from the Board of Selectmen or anyone else toward this idea of a conversation with the DCR. She promptly emailed back to say that she didn't know of anything, but she would explore further and ask more questions. The next day, I got an email from Anne Marie forwarding our Town Planner's response to Anne Marie's question, and the email, I brought some copies of the email for you, but it, basically, in this email to, to Anne Marie Fagan, Bill Clark says, "Joe Lynch and I attended a meeting at DCR to hear about the start of discussions between the developer and DCR. And I've been looking to try and find details of this meeting. I have a number of questions about this meeting, when it was, who was at the meeting, who initiated the meeting, who was in attendance at the meeting, was our DPW Director and Town Planner there on the town's behalf, at the request of the McKean's, at the request of the McKean's attorney." There's a reference in this email that, again, this meeting was, quote, "to hear about the start of discussions between the developer and DCR," but all summer long, we've been told at these, at these public meetings, that there is no developer, there is no plan, there's a proposal for some possible rezoning, so I don't understand the reference to discussions with the developer, and we question, is there a developer here? And again, are there minutes of this meeting? It's, it's, the email caught me by surprise, it's quite out of context, specifically having repeatedly requested this process and an openness to the process. Now, a personal concern is that, my name is mentioned in this email, it says, quote, "The issues Joe Sloan once raised were discussed." Now, I didn't give anybody a list of concerns, I wasn't asked for a list, I wasn't asked to participate, but apparently, my issues were raised and discussed. So I'd like to know what, what exactly went on at that meeting? What was talked about? Was I specifically referenced? Because I have had a number of communications with the DCR about this process, asking for the same thing, for the process to be open and public, and for there to be a dialogue that can include residents. So I'm curious what, how I was represented, and specifically how my concerns were, were addressed at this meeting. Now, I understand that our DPW Director, Traffic Commission members, other Milton officials talk with DCR on an ongoing basis about problems and issues and hotspots and things that come up, but this is a little bit different. This isn't the dialogue that, that I hoped for, and the Selectmen supported this dialogue. In fact, at a, at a recent Traffic Commission meeting that I was at, McKean's attorney specifically asked the Traffic Commission to weigh in on possible changes to the Parkway or impacts to the Parkway the development could cause. Joe Lynch and our Town Engineer both responded, no, that it wasn't their place, it wasn't their role, that they had a full plate, their to-do list was a mile long, they didn't have time to be going and talking about hypothetical projects, but yet, our DPW Director was at this meeting. So, so again, I'm looking for answers, I'm trying to understand how this meeting came together. I hope that you can help me get these answers, and maybe help us all understand what the next step in this dialogue would be, and if these representatives of Milton who went to this meeting spoke of this. I'd appreciate the help.
So I'm going to answer a couple of your questions, and then I'm going to let Mr. Clark have the option of responding if he wants to. You're asking about, let's see, details of the meeting? I wasn't at the meeting, I don't know that anyone at the table was at the meeting or aware of the meeting, other than maybe Mr. Clark, so he'll have to answer that question. As far as, who is a developer and is there a plan? As far as I know, as the Chairman of the Planning Board, there is no application before us, and there's no specific plan. So you reference sort of, if you're referencing statements from this board, that there's no specific application, there's no specific plan, that still remains the case. What's, what's been shown publicly at community meetings, I'm sure there's something. I mean, there's enough discussion about it, that clearly, there's an idea of a plan, if not a plan, but there's nothing before the town that I'm aware of, at least not before this board. Those are the two questions I think that I can answer, so, you know, I'll, I'll look to Mr. Clark and ask him if he wants to respond. I'm not going to require him to respond, and then we can kind of, we can kind of go from there.
I, I have no problem responding to it. I actually did call Mr. Sloan back last Thursday at 3:19, and did leave a message, and I haven't heard from him since then. I did reply to Anne Marie's email in her request that originally, I don't know if it went to Anne Marie or it went to Katie. I was at the bottom of the string, I answered, sent my comments back to her. Joe Lynch and I did attend a meeting of the Engineering Department at DCR, and it was to discuss what would DCR want, what would the town want, who's going to do what, are we on the same page as them when it came to engineering wants? If we know that it's their issue, we want to make sure that if they're asking for something, that we're making, they get the right stuff.
Is that specific, sorry, this is not interrogation, but I'm just trying to get clarification. Is that regarding this specific quote-unquote "plan," or this, you know, what we've heard about for the Ice House site?
It would be for the Ice House site and potentially other, it was just for the Ice House site that day.
Okay.
If, I know there is a traffic engineer who will be looking, should this move forward, if that traffic engineer is looking at it, are we asking for, what is DCR going to be? There were no particulars there. The issue was one of engineering desires. We offered nothing. We didn't say that it was a done deal. It never came up like that. It's, if this is going to take place, what are we looking for, for engineering pieces here? What do they have? What do we have for, for data? And it was just our engineers talking to their engineers, making sure that it doesn't go forward without further discussion.
There's probably more that you'd like to hear, and if there is, I think you could probably reach out to Mr. Clark and ask him directly. I'm going to move the agenda along, but hopefully that answers at least the preliminary parts of your questions, and I think if you want to call Mr. Clark back and get this further detail...
No, I appreciate that, and what I'll do is I'll put those, those questions that I expressed, maybe I'll put those in writing, and maybe we can all collect that information.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I have copies of that for Planning Board members, just so that people are clear on those emails.
Thank you. Are there any further statements for citizen speak?
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Anetta McSweeney from 250 Blue Hills Parkway, and I wish to speak about the Ice House development. I spoke at the last Planning Board meeting as well, and I wish to encourage the board to consider, or again, consider some of the ramifications of further development of this property. One proposal for a marketplace where there has been no active use of, for several years is out of scale for this small property, which is bound by conservation land and private homes. The increase in traffic on a roadway, which sees more than its fair share of traffic, does not ensure the safety of our students to the high school, middle school, and the Tucker Elementary School, as well as the walkers, joggers, and bicyclists who use the Parkway extensively. The existing flow of traffic is already challenging, and our Chief of Police has noted that it is imperative that we try to curtail this use by cut-through traffic. Proposed alterations in the historic Parkway, which will be involved, including loss of green space and trees to allow the flow of traffic into and out of this development, should not be encouraged. We should work with DCR to protect the historic features of this Parkway and to improve its beautification for all. With all of the extensive further development throughout the town being residential, the change in zoning of this property for this business development should not be allowed. The property should revert to residential use per present zoning stipulations. The decision on this should not be based on a popularity contest by the neighbors. It is important that the board make its decision based on what is best for the town of Milton.
Is there any further citizen speak? Okay, seeing none, and we're going to move into the public hearings. We're behind schedule, but I think we're about to get caught up. Our 17, 7:15 public hearing for Dennis and Martha Burke, Special Purpose for Cluster Development, 245 Highland Street, continued for September 22nd. I believe that applicant requests to continue that? Mr. Corcoran, is that the case?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So we're going to, I'd take a motion to continue that to November 10th, please, at...
Do you want to do November 10th or November 16th?
Do you, Mr. Corcoran, November 10th or November 16th?
Knowing that the 16th may, you may be here late.
Right.
Six, the, I prefer the 16th.
Okay. 16th at 7:15? 16th at 7:15? What else do we have? Right now, that's it, right?
This meeting was just invented, so there's nothing. If we're going to meet with the Selectmen, is that going to be?
That would be for?
Ice House.
Why don't we do 7:45?
For this, for the Burks?
And on that agenda, why don't you assume 7:15 for public discussion about, for new business, for public discussion? It won't be a hearing, obviously, but... So do I have a motion to continue to?
Yes, I'm moved.
16th at 7:45. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Corker. We're now going to open our--
Before you do that?
Yes. We move to the 7:45? Is that what you're going to suggest?
I was going to ask if we want to just get through 1259 Brushhill Road.
To do what?
I'm not sure that'll be any quicker.
Okay.
We're going to go to the 7:45, though?
Yeah, well, I'm going to reference it, but I'm not going to, I can't open it yet. So just a quick announcement. The 7:45 Carrick Realty Trust special permit for Central Avenue planned unit development for 131 Elliott Street continued from October 13th, while not open yet, will be continued immediately when it is opened, and it will likely be continued to November 10th at a time to be determined at when it is opened. So if you're here for that, you can be on your way.
The 10th or the 16th?
Probably the 10th. Probably on the 16th and the 10th after that. Sorry, that was sarcastic.
Is there going to be any discussion on 1259? I thought this was just--
It'll be continued.
Oh, it's being continued?
You might as well help them out, too.
Then we should help them out. I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm--
They sent in a letter requesting that they get continued.
We should absolutely do that. So we don't have to open that.
You might want to invite Mary.
But I'll invite, yeah, Mary, you want to come up very quickly and? 7:30, standby, we'll be right with you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm Mary McKeatrick, representing the applicants for the 1259 Brushhill Road A and R. And the purpose of my coming here tonight is just to, I've already sent a letter to the board asking, or granting, an additional six weeks for a decision. And I think I explained in the letter that we have a meeting, we have a sit walk and a meeting with the Conservation Commission, which was postponed from last month. So we haven't met with the Conservation Commission yet. This is a site that has a lot of wetlands on it, and we feel that it's best to go through some of the process with the Conservation Commission before we decide what we want to do with this application, for sure. Because if they have certain constraints, and the number of lots are limited even by that, it's going to change our plan. We're going to have to come back with something different. We did have one meeting with neighbors. It was, I didn't go to it. It was a low-key neighbors' meeting. No meeting of the minds, but I think a chance to discuss what everybody's objectives are, and hopefully, some discussion will continue. And I can't promise you that we'll come back, you know, all agreeing. But I think we're beginning to, you know, all get a better idea of where everybody is. And so I think it's in everyone's best interest to have some extra time. And so I would say that we would like to come back, if it's possible, on the 8th of December. If that's going to be, that's about six weeks? Is it the 10th?
8th of December, I'm sorry.
December, yeah. It's about six weeks.
Okay, as long as we're within the timeframe of your letter, that's--
We could even put you on first.
Well, that would be really very nice, but whatever you can do.
Sure, we'll put you on for 7:15 on the 8th, and Tim will just double-check the timing on that. If we need to adjust your letter, we'll ask you to do that.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right.
Oh, when is the sit walk for Conservation Commission?
11:05, and then their meeting is the 15th.
11:05 at?
At 12:50. Oh, I think they are scheduled a two-hour sit walk. It may be the only one that day. And they usually start at 8:00.
8:00 AM? I'm sorry?
Eight o'clock. Eight o'clock, yeah.
8:00 AM?
Eight AM.
So 11:05 at 8:00 AM, if anyone wishes to attend.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much for moving that up.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Tim's persistent.
Real quick--
That you're persistent.
Before we go to the 7:30, the discussion on 1672 Canton Avenue and Carberry Estate, I believe, is also being hunted. We're not going to have that tonight.
We have a revised agenda that has that.
Right, I understand. But if anybody had the old agenda that's here from the public that was here to hear about Carberry, there's not going to be a discussion about that this evening. Okay, 7:30. This will be Polty Homes special permit for cluster development, Milton Woods Town Farm Site, continued from October 13th. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Hello, hi. Hi. Hello. Ready?
Go for it.
Okay, for the record, again, my name is Mark Mastriani. I'm here representing Polty Homes of New England. And we are the applicant for the special permit request for the cluster subdivision at the Town Farm at the end of Governor Stoughton Lane. And I'd like to take a moment to update the board on some of our actions since the last planning board meeting held earlier this month. First and foremost, we've continued to work with Lisa Eggleston on responding to and resolving her remaining comments on the very thorough stormwater review she did for this project. And as you recall, she was here at the last meeting, and she, and I think there was a lengthy dialogue between the board and herself, and our engineers, and the public. We made a lot of progress, but there were still some remaining comments that we needed to respond to. And since the last meeting, Mike and his staff have submitted revised plans to Lisa and revised stormwater engineering calculations to Lisa. And hopefully, prior to the next meeting, you know, we will have been successful in responding to all of her comments, and we can get an all-clean letter from her. We don't have that tonight. In fairness, we gave her everything yesterday, so it's where we're at. So we, but we have, we do think we successfully addressed all of her remaining comments. One of the specific comments we spent some time talking about was the concern behind Lot 15 and 16 along the property line. And we do have a solution to that. We have resolved that. We submitted that to Lisa. And Mike, Mike Rizzotti from Marshawn and Associates is here again. And he can go over the resolution to that with the board, you know, if you wish. The other, the other thing we have done is reached out to the Engineering Department, DPW Department, and we've re-approached them regarding the stormwater, the stormwater BMPs that are being designed, associated with this project, and wanted to confirm with them the maintenance responsibilities between what the town will be maintaining and what the homeowners association will ultimately be maintaining. So we've started that dialogue with them, and we do not have a memo from them. But again, prior to next meeting, we fully intend to submit that memo to the board, which should clarify that question. And third, a third large item that I wanted to discuss tonight is, with me tonight is a new face. This is Bob Micho from MDM Transportation Consultants. Bob is our transportation consultant that is helping us assess the traffic impact associated with Milton Woods, our project here. And Bob's here to make a short presentation on the traffic impact study that we initially did for the project, discuss sightlines and the entrance design and its safety, and answer any questions that the board may have. I know at the last meeting, we discussed the concern of the bike safety at the entrance onto Unquity. And so I've mentioned that to Bob, and he's fully up to speed and prepared to, you know, have a fruitful discussion with the board on what we can do and what we propose to do to increase the safety there for the bicycles. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's where we're at today.
Okay. We have some materials that were submitted to us. Do you have copies of these? We have a letter from Bike Milton.
I have not received.
Actually, regarding, is that for Town Farm?
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right. I was wondering why we got that, why you had those specific comments. Okay. And we have, is this one the right one?
That is also not related. That's just something that came in.
Great, so we have nothing to talk about. We're all-- Okay. Anything from staff?
They've got some material to present. I'd be interested to see it.
All right, very good.
You do have updated grading and drainage plans that came in. I sent them out electronically. They can be posted up here if we need them. And, yeah, they'll be, they'll be working, as Mark said, with DPW to clarify the stormwater maintenance. That's, there's been a lot of back and forth in the last couple of days about that. But for the next hearing, I'm sure we'll have some more materials. But I think traffic, traffic was the biggie for this meeting, so.
Okay. All right, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Robert Micho, a principal with MDM Transportation Consultants based in Marlboro, Massachusetts. What I'd like to do is just give a brief snapshot of what we've done to identify impact and recommendations for this project. We have submitted a traffic impact report dated to May 16th of this year that was prepared in general conformance with industry standards and protocols. The basis of this study was the 23-unit residential project, now known as Milton Woods. The next slide will, of course, present the proximity of the property, which is really just south of Canton Avenue to the north, and just north of Harland Street to the south. You'll see that the, in fact, this has a pointer on it?
It does, yeah.
And, oh, yeah. So you've got the skating rink in this vicinity, Harland here. Proposed access to the property is fairly centrally located to the boundary of the property along Unquity Road. A lot of thought was put into where that access point would actually be placed, and I could speak to that in just a moment. But the next slide will give a snapshot of the relative traffic increases associated with the 23-unit subdivision of the sort. These are numbers that were generated using industry standard protocols for projects like this. This is the standard protocol used for every residential project in the Commonwealth, including those that are subject to state-level permitting. As the board may be aware, we are subject to state-level permitting through the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the access itself. And we've consulted very early with them to discuss the impact of the project and the placement of the driveway and the access permitting requirements for that driveway. You'll see in this snapshot, in time, if you will, what happens during a typical commuter period during a weekday. This is very stick-figure-ish, but essentially, it shows the proximity of the driveway to Unquity Road. Three of every four trips, we know today that travel on Unquity Road in the morning, during the morning commuter hour, tend to be headed north toward Canton Avenue. And likewise, in the evening, southbound, that trend reverses. So we know for this particular project that three of every four trips that are generated are likely to be oriented in the same fashion as what we've observed. So again, this is a snapshot over a one-hour period. What it shows is that we can expect an increase of about one vehicle every four minutes to the north of the property toward, or to or from the Canton Avenue area. And fewer than half a dozen trips to or from the south during that same period of time. Fairly nominal number of vehicles. And in fact, relative to the existing traffic volumes that we've recorded on Unquity Road, these represent about a 1% to 2% change in that level of activity. So it's fairly inconsequential as it relates to what you see today. The next slide would show the equivalent weekday evening peak hour. Again, during a weekday evening, strictly one-hour period, this level of activity is still less than 20 vehicle trips to or from the north, or one vehicle every three minutes being generated, and fewer than 10 to or from the south. The next slide give the board some sense as to, and I know the scale is very difficult to read on this, but you'll see that these are the so-called "design" volumes that we've used to evaluate the operations of the driveway itself. You'll see the 800 to 900 directional trips in the morning heading north, and the same, or reverse, in the evening, with the trips that I just presented superimposed on those volumes. On that basis, we know that there will be very minimal delays experienced at this driveway. You know, anecdotally, if anyone from the board, the public, were to go to Quissett Brook, for instance, and look at its operations, it's fairly inconsequential. You'll have an occasional car pull up, look left, right, select a gap, and go with very little delay. Where the Quissett Brook example has some 50 units associated with it, this one has far fewer, 23. And so, you know, we expect that the impact of this will be far below that, even experienced at Quissett Brook. As it relates to the driveway location, you know, we're very sensitive to making sure that the placement of that driveway met certain safety-based criteria and standards. And we're also sensitive to the fact that, as we're subject to access permitting with the DCR, that we're accounting for bicycle facilities that have recently been identified, you know, striped, if you will, with a bike lane on Unquity Road. So the next slide, I give a snapshot of the placement of the driveway, again, central to the property, and also, central to two points of curvature along Unquity Road, right? So if you look to the left of the driveway in this orientation, that's looking toward the skating rink. We, for design purposes, need to achieve a minimum distance, visibility distance or sightline, of 360 feet from a point where a vehicle would be stopped in the driveway to a point where a vehicle could be observed approaching the driveway in this, in this orientation. We exceed that requirement, right? And the only work that's required to achieve that standard is some vegetative clearing, very minimal, along that sight line that's shown in green. The most significant impact would be a 24-inch tree that needs to be removed to ensure that the sightline is adequate. That's already been discussed with DCR, along with the clearing of trees and vegetation that's required to build the driveway itself within the easement area that exists. Likewise, looking to the right of this diagram, the sightlines actually are far better, if you will. There's really no clearing required in that sightline direction. And the geometry and the placement of the driveway, of course, will need to meet the DCR engineering standards and criteria, which it does. The next slide will give you a kind of a rendered--
Is that it?
I see, yeah. This slide presents a color-rendered version of what the driveway will look like when it's built. And you'll see that the relationship of the driveway to Unquity, you have the W L central lines. You can see the bike lane that was fairly recently striped by DCR along that edge with appropriate conforming markings, little bicycle symbols in it. You'll see in this that we've, we've shown a colored pavement section that runs along that bike path. It's green, and it's got bicycle markings located within it. That's actually a design standard that's well-recognized for conditions where vehicles need to turn and cross a bicycle crossing. DCR, to date, has not opted to place those types of markings along Unquity Road. But what we're suggesting and proposing here, again, subject to their approval, would be just that. The placement of a highly visible painted section that alerts motorists whether they're turning into or leaving the driveway that there's a presence of a bicycle facility there. And this is a standard design feature that is shown in these typical sections, right? So you've got the bicycle marking itself with an arrow, and then the striping. And the markings along the driveway itself would be dashed to make it pop a little bit. Again, all subject to DCR approval, but, you know, the visibility to the bicycle lane will exceed that, that we're designing for vehicle access, right? That will actually be more visible from a greater distance for motorists who are traveling along Unquity Road, and will certainly be very visible for folks who are turning into or out of the driveway. So the conclusions of our study are that this is a very low-generating use by virtue of it being a residential use and that based on the number of units. of it being a residential use and that based on the number of units. 1% to 2% change in traffic activity along Unquity, which is absolutely inconsequential as it relates to traffic operations or delays, and sensitive to designing the driveway to achieve all of the applicable safety-based standards. All of this information, coincidentally, has been submitted as part of the MEPA filing for the project, has been reviewed by DCR. We've not received any comments, you know, requiring supplemental analysis or anything like that. At this point, once we get through the planning board process, we would proceed to access permitting with DCR and using the standard design submittals and protocols. So I'd be glad to hear if there are any specific questions the board has. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
When you use the counts, is the count for a single-family different than a senior housing unit?
It is. The senior housing tends to generate a lower number, and in fact, it's a separate dedicated land-use code in the standards. We've applied the Single Family Detached Housing Standard, which is a higher-generating standard for this particular use.
Okay, thank you. And you mentioned driveway, but is this is really a roadway, right, in terms of construction?
Yeah, so nomenclature. I'm calling it a driveway because it will essentially function that way, but I think it will be a roadway, a straight.
But so in terms of like the turning radius, for example, that's a roadway standard for this type of subdivision?
Correct. Now, it is subject to DCR approval, so their standards would call for, typically call for about a 25-to-30-foot curb radius. Because of the sensitivity of Unquity Road, I suspect they may tweak that. We're actually showing curb radii that are 25-foot dimension curb radii. They could certainly ask for something larger, but we've already tested that against emergency vehicles that would need to access the property, and the 25-foot standard works. You'll also notice in the prior slide, this is the current design. We actually have flared the driveway out, or the roadway, I'll call it, so that it's slightly wider for the first 75 to 100 feet here, so that, to the extent people are turning into the driveway, it facilitates that. We don't want to have geometry that's so tight that you have to slow down almost to a stop to negotiate it. So we designed that to anticipate a standard turning speed of probably 15 miles an hour or so.
And then, if I recall from the last meeting, the slope of the road at the bottom there is shallower than it is as it rises up, is that right?
It's a fairly level landing area, we would call it.
Yeah, it's 3% or 75 feet, I believe, is what we've got.
And then lastly, there's a lot of, there's stone walls and retaining walls that come down and follow the road, and I'm presuming that your sightlines take those into account, right?
They do, yeah. Everything within the triangles shown, as they're delineated with the green here, is clear of any wall feature vegetation. So you have a clear, in other words, from ground level to 1.3 and 1/2 feet above that level, which is the driver's eye height, everything will be cleared and maintained at, so that that's feasible.
Will there need to be maintenance on that, ongoing, to maintain that height?
You know, there's, if you look at what is actually happening on Unquity Road today, the vegetation's actually fairly tame. It's mainly just trees. And so we don't anticipate that there will be any necessary ongoing maintenance required based on the amount of so-called clearing that needs to happen here. It's really just tree removal and a little bit of understory, and pretty minimal.
And not necessarily a question for you, but maybe for the team, is there any lighting proposed at this intersection?
There is. We have proposed two streetlights, one on each side of the roadway. Let's delineate.
Is that on the plan, or is it on a different plan?
It is on the plan. I don't know if it shows up very well there, but I wanted to make mention, I think it's important, is we usually use one for a lot of our projects, developments. We put one, sometimes we put one streetlight at the driveway to the access road, to the main road. And in this particular application, we've chosen to put two because, for two reasons. One is that stretch of Unquity Road is pretty dark at night. I don't believe there's a streetlight in the vicinity other than the Quissett Brook entrance, which is a small light. And secondly, it's the discussion of the bike safety and the safety of the entryway that we've had some discussions about. So we thought it was prudent of us to add a second light there to help with the safety of the intersection.
And then the project sign will be located outside of that visibility zone as well, right?
Correct.
Those are my questions.
Questions?
Couple of questions. I think a rumble strip would be a good idea, just a concrete rumble strip in front of the driveway along, through Unquity Road, similar to what they've done on Brushhill Road at the entrance to Fuller Village.
For the bicycle path, you mean?
No, for the roadway, just to slow down the traffic on that road.
Well, DCR's practices, as far as I know, would not include that kind of feature. It's certainly something we can discuss with them.
Exactly. And discussing something with DCR, do you have any idea how we might attract the DCR to discuss with us?
Well, we'll be undertaking an access permit process with them, and during that process, I suspect that the town will be involved in those discussions, and it typically involves a meeting with DCR.
But we will have issued a permit by then, and there are a number of issues that we may see fit to require on the DCR property, such as landscaping. It has to look as much like a tree-wooded area as possible, and not a lot of, you may have seen the embankment down the street where they had another, right at Harland Street. And one of the people who testified here said, "It's just the worst possible design." It is, it's a big embankment covered with mulch, and then a few little trees struggling to establish themselves and not having a very good job of it. It really is, I've been thinking that maybe when you cut down this 24-inch tree, you should do some mitigation for that stretch of roadway. And certainly, if you look at what has been done at that other curb cut, we certainly don't want that to happen again because it is just awful. And so the landscape plan here, I mean, we have, the next slide shows something in color, and it's sort of an orange-colored wall.
Well, that's a sidewalk.
All right.
Yeah, that, just to be clear, that exhibit there is to present and to show the striped bicycle lane, that entryway.
It's not your landscape plan.
That's correct.
Yes.
The, our engineering department is conversing with DCR's engineering department. And it all relates back to the access permit that they're talking about for access to this road. The difference here is where this road has its landing spot is DCR lands. Where that wall, that wall of mulch is, is private property. So there's a difference between who owns what. If DCR had owned that mulch hill, they probably would have done something different. These guys have to deal with DCR, not, they can't put the mulch wall in.
And I think there's, there is a difference between what's happening there and what's happening here. This is going to be a very limited cut, you know? The focus here is to be as least disruptive as possible to the existing wooded environment. And while cuts are required to build the roadway itself, we do not have extensive clearing where the opening to the Unquity Road will be provided.
You have a detention basin there, don't you?
Mike has been dealing with the engineers, so he can give a better explanation.
Yes, so there will be required mitigation for the amount of trees that we take out with the DCR property.
You're going to be taking out a fair number for that detention basin.
Yeah, actually, in that area, there aren't many big trees, per se, but, you know, we've constructed walls, and we've tried to minimize the disturbance as we come in. I can't remember off the top of my head exactly how many trees that we're actually going to take down, but I think it's around 50. And the size of the trees matters also relative to the mitigation that's going to be required by the DCR. So I believe it's, they go by the amount of inches that we're eliminating, and we have to mitigate for that amount of trees somewhere along here and in the area that we took them out, if we can do that.
And this is all in the Design Submittal Protocol?
The mitigation, the DCR, that would be something that they would mandate of us, and then we would...
No, I mean, there's mention given of the Design Submittal Protocol.
Oh.
You mentioned the Design Submittal Protocol, and I'm just wondering what the Design Submittal Protocol is.
Yep, so there are two separate processes. There's the planning board process, of course, and then there's the process that involves what we call the access permitting with DCR. DCR will first require that the project be approved locally before they'll consider issuing an access permit. And that sounds backwards, but that's the way it's done, same with MassDOT. So we would submit as part of that access permit application, fully-approved site plan set that would indicate, you know, the entire property, any permits and approvals and entitlements that go along with that, for instance, Conservation Commission, the site plan itself, drainage calculations, things of that nature. And then there will be a supplemental design sheet, if you will, that relates to the portion of the roadway that exists within the DCR layout, right? And that would relate to the curb radii on the driveway, any drainage structures that are required, the pavement markings, the materials of construction for the sidewalk, signs, the bike markings, things of that nature. So in addition to the approved site plan set, there'll be several additional sheets that would delineate in great detail those features within their layout.
The engineering ones.
The engineering plans, correct.
And then there would be the site plan.
Correct, yeah.
And I guess if DCR wants the town to give them an approved site plan, it should include a landscape plan for the entrance, just because they presumably want to say this is what the town wants, and we'll see if we can give them what they want.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say.
Just, if you recall, very much unlike what's depicted there, it's a very significant cut. And if you look on the plans they've given us tonight, you'll see where you pointed out that orange section, there's a wall. In reality, just inside that, there is a wall.
That's right.
And then there's a second wall. So I'm not trying to be positive or negative, but when you talk about the entrance at the end of Harland to, I don't know the name of the street that goes up there.
It's Unquity Road and Harland Street. It's not, it's a driveway.
It's a new development.
It's a three-block extension.
But when you mention, oh, it's just a blank slope, if you will, with mulch on it, in reality, what you're going to have here is, you can't, the trees, if you're going to have a wall.
You're going to have terraces.
You're going to have terrace, double wall.
And what's going to be on the terraces is a matter of interest.
The trees that are there now on, they're not going to be on the right elevation.
The question is whether or not there could be new trees on the terraces.
Yeah, tree trees at the street level, and then smaller landscaping, at least for this section from last time.
Right, so we would, in any event, that's sort of looking from Unquity Road, and then we'd have the, the site plan would show the looking from above as to what you'd have, which will be useful because it's, especially with that detention basin, you're doing quite a lot of work on the DCR's plan.
So I'm just, I'm just curious, further discussion, how much influence is DCR going to have on the entrance once there's an approved plan and they accept it from the town and it shows terrace walls, and it's pretty cut wide open?
Presumably, I don't know.
I mean, can they turn around and say, "We don't like that"? You can't do that behind me?
Presumably, they can, but...
Presumably, they'd have to come back to us again, correct?
If they, DCR, they'd do something else.
One of the comments that DCR had was, they asked us to minimize the disturbance in the right-of-way, and that's similar to comments that this board has made along previous meetings. So the terrace walls are intended to not only be aesthetically pleasing and to improve the design of the entryway, they will also significantly help to minimize the disturbance of the entry, and that's...
The horizontal disturbance.
Yes. I think DCR will look very favorably upon the design changes we've made.
Do we have a landscaping plan in front of us?
One has been submitted. I don't know if it's in the latest progress set that's been submitted, but it was in the original plan.
Okay, I have it here.
Again, it's not much planned to be argumentative or negative, but to mitigate the disturbance, I mean, to make the major cut that you're making, it's in itself a significant, for lack of better words, disturbance. I mean, it's, I mean, you're doing the best with what you have, maybe, but it's a significant disturbance. You're not just going to have a little 20-foot, 22-foot-wide road cut with the trees still existing, and it's going to be a major difference.
There is some work, no doubt. There's a significant cut coming off of Unquity. But one of the reasons we brought Chris Huntress, who was here at last meeting, when we engaged him on the project, was, one of his tasks is to design the entryway and the wall system so that it fits in with the land and also looks aesthetically pleasing, which I think is what I'm hearing. We want it to look good, and we want it to be landscaped, we want it to be, you know, landscaped trees, shrubs, flowers. So I think it might be helpful if we act, a landscaping plan that we could provide to the board, because there seems to be some confusion on that.
I think that, you know, it's an interesting point about how much disturbance or minimizing the disturbance in terms of how far horizontally you go, but the visual impact of that disturbance could be, could perhaps be different. So what I'm getting at is, and this would be where the landscape architect would be helpful, is if you pulled this back a bit so that, instead of having these just run parallel with the roadway, whether these walls start to diffuse the actual cut. So when you're looking up, you're not just looking as if somebody came through with a bulldozer and drove a straight line through, but there was actually some work in here to sort of splay it.
What might help, and I think in line with what you're saying, is when we visited over on 1259...
Brushhill.
Brushhill, and they said the land architect that did that bazillion years ago, whatever, had, is one of his signatures was that he had these winding roads. It might be thought that if you, I don't know, is it, I suppose, right where you land on Unquity, you want to be pretty much perpendicular, but maybe shortly after you get into your cut, you could, you know, wind it a little bit so that if I look down, I don't see down the road very far.
There's a pretty nice bend there.
Because it is a big cut, so if it's a big cut and you have like a channel that I can look down, you know, 900 feet, it's different than if it's a cut and I can only see 50 feet until it winds back and I don't see it anymore.
You're actually making a great point. We always try to serpentine our roads when we can. It's traffic calming, because your view changes as you turn. And I do think that we've done that here, and this cuts off the road, but as we do come in perpendicular to Unquity, there is a bend, a radius, that takes you around the corner, and then it actually comes back the other way. And we do that because we do like to serpentine our roads, and also, you know, to be frank, there's two wetlands that we're serpentine-ing through, so the, that really was the other route. So the location of the entrance on Unquity is really set by the sightlines that Bob has relayed to us, and the location of the site, of the drive is in the exact spot it needs to be for safety and sightlines, and also the wetland to the west. And then, as the road serpentine's through, there are two wetland systems there that are really restricting and constraining to us, so.
I can add a little bit more, and Bob can probably comment even further on it, but...
I can add a little bit more and Bob can probably even comment even further on it, but we don't have a lot of distance between here and here as far as horizontal alignment, so any significant turning of the road would, in coming back the same way, would create a compound curve that may be unsafe because it's too tight. So, to do anything, from my point of view, to do anything substantial that would give you the effect that you're looking for, couldn't really be done in that safely in that small area.
But you can look at those stone retaining walls.
Certainly, what I would look at, per your suggestion, would be what type of trees might be existing, like right behind those walls at the corner. If there's nothing really there, then maybe that would give us an opportunity to move the wall back and plant significant trees in front of that to give you that look. My suspicion is there might be some pretty good trees that are here that you don't want to remove, but...
Well, the idea is to have it not appear so much as if you took this thing and you just sliced right through it, right? So that you're having something that blends out better, right?
You really want to screen the view going in this direction, like if you're looking down here, so you don't see that terrace type of thing. You'd like to screen that a little bit from the street.
I mean, if you look at, I mean, that's almost kind of like what you'll see as soon as you turn in, right? And that's not that desirable, right?
Mm-hmm. So, you'd like to see some planting, maybe, right in the front here that would...
I'm thinking, even if you don't have big trees there, that maybe you pull that retaining wall over so that you're not as steep right at that edge and so you pull that back in a little bit and that, so that you can get that planting in front. So, cut your apparent, you know, slice through and then you see the wall coming around instead of seeing the end of the wall.
Right, so you want, off the edge of the road, you want more same grade before you hit the wall?
A little more gradual than...
So that you could work with that.
Yeah.
But that would increase their cut.
Well, it potentially moves it back a little bit.
Not the depth of the cut, but it would increase the volume because it would increase the area of the cut.
It might push it back a little bit, but it, I think right now, if you, literally, you're going to see this, right? Because it's going to come on you really straight, the way the walls are...
It looks like, without stationing, it looks like what you just described a minute ago, the mic is, by scale, it looks like you're about, I don't see any station there, so it looks like by scale, you got about a little better than 200 feet, like pretty straight shot.
Right.
Yeah, this is 150 right here, I believe, 150, this station here, and it starts the curve. So, you know, like, to this point, this, if there isn't anything really substantial right here, this could be moved back in this direction on an angle and then that would create, if you will, a plateau.
Right.
Right here, that could be planted with substantial amount of trees, which would then block the view from the street as you were looking at the upper part of that.
Unquity, it would block Unquity as you were going by.
No, it pulls the grade, it pulls that cut line back a little bit, but what it means is you're not seeing like the edge of the walls coming at you, you're seeing that kind of splay out.
You'd actually see the face of the wall.
Yeah, you see the face of the wall and so the end of the wall.
The face of the wall is going to be fieldstone, I assume.
So, I do think a blow-up plan, you know, with the landscape architect taking a look at that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
As though the walls might have been there before.
Yeah, not so...
Right, as though, say, "I wonder what those walls were for."
Don't put them there.
Your streetlights, we're going to, you've got an opportunity, since there are no other streetlights in the immediate vicinity, to do something appropriate with your streetlight. So, we're going to want you to specify what sort of streetlights you're going to be, going to be suggesting, because I think that something...
So, we've submitted...
Parkway friendly would be good.
Yeah, we did submit the streetlights to engineering this week to see if it would meet with their requirements and we are happy to...
Engineering of the DCR or of...
Milton.
Engineering, the Milton.
But it doesn't, it's a DCR road, so that would be there. Well, of course, the other street, no, it would be, I guess the entrance is going to be a DCR road. It's sort of like Hillside Street. There's a section of Hillside Street that's a DCR road and then you get to the town portion when you get out of the DCR. So, the beginning of your road will be a DCR road and then when you get out of the DCR jurisdiction, it'll become a town street. So, it really is, we've got a lot of ability to specify the streetlights, only subject to the DCR saying they don't like it.
I know that the stuff that was submitted are Doc Scott compliant, they're LED.
Are they attractive?
They're like the ones down in the...
It's all a matter of opinion.
It's down in the village, Roman Village.
How tall are they?
12 feet of pole height and then the heads are 3 feet, so it's an effective height of 15 feet. They're direct berry, they're fluted, black pole. The heads, as Bill mentioned, have a cap and they're very attractive and we can, of course, submit the, submit them to this board and we can show them on the screen at the next meeting.
It's on the spec sheet.
Is that, as you go off, are you going to be using the same line?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, it's very minimal lighting, it's really for wayfinding and safety.
Some lights every 300 feet, 200 feet?
No, no, what we propose is the two lights at the entryway, one additional light at the curve before you get to the homes and then one additional light at the cul-de-sac at the end. That is the...
So, for a total of four lights?
Total of four lights, yes.
Back to the traffic, do you have down someplace the references where you sifted the information from the Trip Generation Handbook, where it came from?
Yes, that's...
Those do seem pretty minimal and I haven't visited that book in quite a while, but I think all the single-family homes is by bedrooms and...
It's actually by unit and type, not necessarily by bedroom.
Oh, okay.
Although it's based on, the standard that we used is derived from a database that is for suburban located, single-family detached housing that is not located near public transportation and is very representative of what you have here. Our experience, coincidentally, you know, I've been doing this for 30 years, almost 30 years now, we've got a database that shows that the national standards tend to be conservatively high. It's a higher estimate than what actually happens.
Is the data cut from the Trip Generation Handbook?
Yes, does. The latest edition, ninth edition, yep. So, you know, we think that if anything, these are probably conservatively high numbers, but they're low nonetheless.
Do you think that the numbers are so minimal that you don't have to do any kind of assessment of the intersection that Canton Avenue, as far as whether it's graded today as an A or B and whether the impact will, you know, impact the grading?
The standards would call for evaluating a given location if you have a 5% or more change in the volume or usually about 100 vehicles or more impact. That's generally accepted rule of thumb.
Daily?
Per hour. So, in this particular case, where you take the less than 20 trips that are going, coming and going through that intersection at Canton Avenue, that most likely represents about less than a one-half of 1% change to what happens there, which is well within the normal day-to-day fluctuation that you see. So, it's really not something that if you evaluated it would produce a result that was even meaningful, so we didn't see the need.
You sure the DCR data's good because the previous information that was presented, a comment was made that the DCR, and I'm paraphrasing because I can't remember exactly what it said, the DCR, as it indicated that the traffic on Unquity Road has decreased over years?
Mass DOT actually has permanent count stations around the area and when we looked at those, which is standard protocol for these types of studies, it became apparent, based on that recorded historical information, that the growth in the area is flat or in some cases declining. That doesn't factor on how we evaluated this project, just to be clear.
Well, that isn't the, that isn't where you got the original count of what Unquity is seeing presently without the...
Correct, we did those counts, you know, so those are 2016 real counts.
You did them yourself, you had somebody out there.
Correct, yeah, and...
Because I think DCR must be missing something because I've been there for 17 years, there used to be a stop sign at Unquity in Canton Avenue, it wasn't that bad and then, you know, how long ago they put the traffic signal in, probably eight, nine, 10? But I mean, the traffic there has increased and I don't, you know, attack you guys with that because I'm telling you, it's increased before this.
Right.
Going the other way, it's an increase too, because going out, when you get to the Blue Hill River Road and Hillside Street, the traffic tie-up often goes beyond the police station way down and never happened before and they say, "Well, the traffic hasn't increased, it's preposterous."
It seems rather absurd.
Because it has.
So, I just was, I was just...
No, I don't...
...the basis of the base information, if you will, if they're claiming that.
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything that you said, but we didn't rely on that information. We've in fact assumed a certain level of growth in here. This project, as a point of reference, is on the smallest of the small size of what you typically evaluate. It's really focused was on identifying appropriate travel trends in the immediate vicinity of the driveway to make sure that it's being designed to proper safety-based standards. It's not so much about capacity impact as you'd expect from a larger project like a retail center.
Again, I just like to understand when you're saying it's less than 1%, but that's from a count that you did yourself.
Yes, that's our account.
That's not that information from somebody that fed it to that says the decrease.
Correct.
We've been seeing a decrease in traffic because if that's where it came from, I immediately, you know, I'm skeptical of the source information.
Yeah, no, we always make it a point to obtain our own relevant current existing information. We don't rely on the state, the DCR or anyone else for that information.
I'd like to come back to the four streetlights. We're trying to encourage walkability and bikeability in our communities and it gets dark at 4 o'clock and kids get, need to get shuffled around and if they can walk some to and from school and to their after-school activities, all the better, all the less traffic, right? All the less trips of running them around. But when you have four streetlights, I'm sure there would be a safety concern for having your kids walking here a lot. So, can you explain how you came to arrive at only four streetlights?
Yes, so we typically in our communities have found that our home, in a residential situation like this community, homebuyers don't want the streets lit up like a shopping center. So, as opposed to like a Walmart where it's, or in apartment community where it's lit all night and there's a lot of parking spaces and things like that, you know, this is more of a rural residential street where, you know, at night, the residents here who will be living here will want it dark and they can sleep and, you know, and additional lighting is usually provided with the lights on the garages and they'll also have a light on their front door. They may have a light on a post out in the front lawn, so there's additional lighting that happens besides just the streetlights. But to increase and to light up the street so that the lights are on at all times of the night, it's, from what we've found is, a lot of towns, A, don't like that because they're dark-skY communities and they don't, they're kind of trending towards less lighting rather than more lighting and our homeowners don't necessarily demand that from us as well. And then there's also the maintenance and the cost of the lights too. So, this is a, proposed to be a publicly accepted roadway and the town would accept the maintenance of the lights. And I'm not sure, I know in other towns, they're shutting off lights, they're actually not adding lights, so I'm not speaking with any knowledge of how Milton is doing with their streetlights today, but I know other communities have been doing that. It's a balancing act, you know, so our proposal, our design, really puts the lights at, for safety and wayfinding. Again, it's just at the entryway and then there is a dark curve at the beginning where the home, where there were no homes and then we usually put a light at the terminus of the roadway.
One of the other things, because it is a cluster, typically on most subdivisions you might have a bigger front yard, whereas these homes, most of them only have about a 20 or 30-foot separation between the right of way and the front of the house, so the lights that are on in the front doors will likely have more of an effect, if I could, on lighting up the sidewalk, if that helps any.
Bill, so the town engineer is going to weigh in on the number of fixtures or just the fixture cut itself in terms of it being a public street?
Only on what the cut looked like. The number, I think, goes back to your rules and regs.
And do you recall what the spacing or what the requirement is in the rules and regs? I don't recall.
Probably every 300 feet.
Did we read it?
I think, and I'm speaking from memory, I believe it said in accordance with the town's electrician or something to that effect, which really didn't mean anything. There was no spacing as far as I can remember.
Well, I mean, we'll find it, but I don't think that we need, I mean, it's, it is only advisory because of course the rules and regs apply to subdivisions, although this is a street and the subdivision rules and regs are, you know, focused on...
I love that, here's what it says.
...creation of streets. What?
He found it.
Can you read it out loud?
"The developer shall supply street lighting, which will be located on a suitable post, which may be of concrete, aluminum, or square cross-section creosote-treated wood, having height of 15 feet or more as approved by the board. The street lighting shall be designed in accordance with the current edition of the IES Lighting Handbook or the design standards deemed acceptable to the board. Lumineers shall be of the indirect shielded type. There might be other requirements in there, but I think I don't recall there being a spacing."
That the IES Lighting Handbook may have.
Illuminating Engineering Society.
I think we need to update that because creosote, I'm sure the Lighting Handbook doesn't take into account that we're using LEDs.
Right. Oh, I don't know if it's a Lighting Handbook, you think they'd stamp the date right there?
It's all wavable though.
Yes.
But it doesn't have a specific spacing requirement.
Well, the IES would probably have a footcandle level, which would dictate a spacing, would be my guess, but maybe you could look at that and report back to us next time.
I, you can't help but agree with safety. Safety is always a significant factor, but I tend to think the potential new homeowners and there is a fine balance there between being safe and not looking like it's more of an urban setting. I mean, that's one of the beauties of Milton, proximity to the city, but yet we still keep a very, I think, rural character.
Right, well, there's all different kinds of streetlights. I mean, we're not talking about highway streetlights here, we're talking about neighborhood-level streetlights, so there's different heights, different footcandle levels, different fixture cuts.
Let's take a look at the cuts and see what the engineering department says. I have a question about taking the road back. I know we've had this question before the board in the past, Bill, but I guess, what's been the practice in the past? I mean, I know Lowe's, the Lowe's Circle is a private way.
Boil's.
Boil's Private Way.
Private Way.
The one that we just did, the Jill Christine or Jill Private Way. So, why would the town want to take the road back when we already have more roads than we can really adequately maintain at the moment?
When you have a road that you accept, it meets, it meets standards that...
Same standards.
And it also counts what your Chapter 90 money is. You get more money on your Chapter 90 if you have more roads. The town would plow it, it would be built to better standards.
Same standards.
It's supposed to be, but when they're narrower, we don't plow private ways.
I know.
If it's a new private way as of 2/13, when I'm going.
I understand that.
You're making my point.
You're making my point, yes. I also sit on town meeting and we fight about budget every year and every year we hear about our roads being in terrible condition.
The town has to accept the street. Maybe this is a question for the town meeting because they want it to be a public street and traditionally...
So, there's not an option here?
Subdivision streets, well... Subdivision streets, well, I think if push comes to shove, there's probably a reasonable argument that the town is obliged to, maybe obliged to accept it. I don't know. It's an interesting question. We could burden Mr. Flynn with it if we wanted to, but I have no particular problem with having it a public way.
The last public way that the planning board did was Fletcher Steel Way, Fieldstone Way.
But those were pretty, those were recent.
Right. But those are the last two that we did that, that were ways accepted by the town. The rest were private ways.
Does the, do the police and fire have any concern? Because in the event of snow and where it's the individuals that are required to make sure that they get plowed out, if there were an emergency and they weren't plowed out, is there any issue?
I believe the way it was set up in the 2013 language was the town can plow for emergencies, but then can bill the homeowners association?
Yes.
I think that's how it was set up.
They'll make sure they go in and get you, but...
If, if they're not plowed out.
Right.
It'd be hard to get to you.
Well, I think the idea is they're supposed to, as our town plows are going around, if they notice a road is getting particularly heavy, they can just blow the snow out of the way for emergency purposes.
Well, I've lived on a private lane for 18 years and we've always had to have it privately plowed, including when we've had the seven feet of snow.
And I think a lot of people in town would say, that's great.
But my concern, my concern though is, this is not a, a small lane like some of the streets that we've talked about being a private way. This is, you know, 23 homes. It's going up a pretty steep slope. It's, it's back there a little bit. And it, if we're going to accept it as being built out this way, then I agree with Alex that it's, I don't, I think it's actually preferable for it to be a public street, for safety purposes, really.
Could I add one important piece of information? The first stretch of the street that crosses the DCR land is required to be maintained by the town because DCR has a policy that they won't, no private entity can maintain or own any of the stuff, the features, the things on their, on their land, the improvements on their land. So one of the discussion items that we discussed with them early on and with the town is that the town really needs to maintain everything that's on the DCR land in order, for the, for the agreement to work, the access permit to work. So that's an important consideration.
But of course, that land with the slope does, a private driveway does cut into the, but you're just saying DCR doesn't allow private streets because that private driveway definitely cuts into the DCR roadway.
Yeah, I can't speak to, I just know that when we met with them, they made it clear to us that the town needed to be a party to the access permit and that the town would be maintaining.
Maybe the DCR can, can confirm that.
Which, which road are you talking about?
I'm talking about the driveway. The driveway serving the three houses on the hill with the mulch bank and the pathetic little rotor vendrum.
But that's on, but that's on Harland Street. It's not on Unquity Road. It's on Harland.
So you're saying it's not on any DCR property?
You're saying that's not the DCR property?
That, no, they cut across to get and go up.
They cut across what?
That, that...
No, they, they got a DCR curb cut for that. I, I know they had a DCR curb cut.
They did, but it's on, it's on Harland Street. Harland Street comes out to Unquity Road.
We're going to figure this out for sure right now.
And while Tim's looking that up.
So the only other point, the only other point I'd like, so just, you know, as we think about this as a board, I just want to, you know, make, make point, you know, this is, this is probably going to be a rather expensive street to maintain. It's a significant slope. It's going to need additional salt. It's, this additional salt's going to mean it's going to need additional maintenance. So, you know, it's just something for the board to think about that where...
And all of these people will be taxpayers of the town and, you know, they front, they front, their frontage, you know, just like most people in town, their tax, their taxpayer dollars should go to maintaining their street.
Okay. Well, what I was going to say at the end there was that it's just something I think we need to consider about as we continue to bring new subdivisions into our town. We need to think about the impact, you've got impact on schools and fire and service and everything else. And these are all the things we hear as planning board members about these projects. So I'm just suggesting that we should be thinking about this as we make the decision and, and making sure that if we're accepting these roads, we're accepting roads that aren't going to be an extra burden to the town outside of what a normal road would be.
I, I don't think it would be a bad idea to have Mr. Flynn visit it just for not necessarily exclusively this project, but just for the whole concept of what you're getting at.
I think the question that Alex had about whether we're required to accept them is a question we should have answered.
Right.
Tim, if you leave that one on right there.
Go back to the one I was on?
No, that one right there. Right, the one, no, the other one. That one. That shows you that Harland Street is within the DCR layout. Harland Street used to continue and go across, if you dump that...
Is the shaded area DCR land?
Close the, close the stuff on the left. If you slide down just a little bit, go, show me the top.
Yep, yep, yep.
Harland Street goes across, it goes right there. There's Harland Street again, up on the top, on the right.
Right there. That's Harland Street. You can follow Harland Street through the woods. It comes down, keeps coming down. It goes down. It matches up to Unquity Road and it starts sliding over to the right, back to where it was before. So Harland Street was there before the taking.
And it no longer is because they ripped it up after they did the taking.
Not all of it.
What is the shaded area?
It's a road that goes through the woods with a bridge.
No, I understand that, but it's still a DCR street and it still is a private tie-in to a DCR street.
And that's why they had to get that, the town is being forced into looking at Harland Street and Unquity Road right now. Because of the issue of the access road for this project and for something else that's happening further up on Chickatabut, we're working with DCR on the Harland Street, Unquity Road intersection there. DCR wants that intersection looked at. I know our engineering department, DCR's engineering department, is having conversations now.
What is, I'm asking the same question again. What is, is there some significance to the shaded area?
That's, that's...
Property ownership.
Property owned by DCR.
So the point, and I'm not trying to make a point out of the, the point Alex was making then is that those three new homes up there, the beginning of that road that we keep talking about with the mulch and stuff apparently is DCR property.
Yes.
So all the point was, is that kind of contradicts what you said, that I don't...
Yeah, I understand.
But the land above the orange line on the, the yellow line on the right is where that hill is.
I think the hill is right here on DCR property. It's right here on DCR property and it should be fixed.
Yeah. It is on DCR property. According to this, unless this is completely out of whack.
I think that, I think that...
Turn it on and blow it up.
Don't blow it up. We'll figure it out.
No, 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 on the picture. We can blow up the picture.
Yes, sure. Go ahead. Please ask a question.
You, you mentioned that you'd also, you, you were going to address three things, right? And one of them, which I'm interested in is the storm drain or the stormwater situation at lots 15 and 16. So can we, do you mind if we switch over to that, Alex?
Please, please. Let's go back to this project.
But we might, we, we, just bear in mind, we might want some to do something about that abysmal spot as sort of a mitigation. We might suggest that to DCR.
Okay.
Mike, drainage.
Couple of trees.
Can we raise that up a little bit or did Mike cheat and cut that off? It did. Okay. Sorry about that. The last time we were here, we talked about this little area in here, this being a depression at the base of the, at our property line, which is just off the sheet here. That's the great, great area. So we understood that there was some concern about what was happening down here and, you know, once, once this, if it ever filled up, got filled up, it would run down the property line between these two homes of, on Countryside, down to Countryside Lane. There's actually an electrical easement there where, on the side of the lot lines and the water would run down in that area there.
Right between lots 15 and 16?
Uh, no, down, down in this area.
Behind 16?
Countryside lots. So we understood that that was a concern based on what we heard last meeting. So we looked at what we could do up here to minimize the amount of water from the development, even though we weren't proposing any pavement in that direction, what we could do to mitigate that a little bit more. So what we ended up doing was, we ended up incorporating a small wall here and the purpose for the wall was to create some more room to allow us to grade a swale right along the back of the lot just before, just as it went over the edge of the backyard. And we incorporated drainage here to pick up the water and that drainage will send it down eventually into the detention plant number five. So what we end up doing is taking all the houses and backyards in this area here and diverting it down to our, our basin instead of letting it run down to here.
Do you have a sense of how tall that new stone wall is?
That would be less than four feet. We don't want it to be structural. We, we put it there also as maybe a permanent barrier for people who will eventually own this lot to prevent them from, you know, doing anything on the other side of it, which...
And that's at the 40-foot from the property line?
That's a 100-foot buffer between a lot line and the property. That's the 100-foot buffer there.
That's the 100-foot buffer, okay.
Yes.
Well, that seems like an improvement.
I think you, I thought you'd like that.
Thank you. Now Lisa will respond to that as well, right?
Yes, she will.
Yeah, okay. And then we did, we touched on this a little bit last time because we had these sections we were looking at, which was great. Have you, have you looked at my concern about how much cut and fill? Are you, are you pretty much thinking that you need to do the level that you showed us previously? Particularly that those, some of those lots were, you know, there was, I think it was the section through BD, which was up at lots four and...
Is that it?
What is that? Lots four, five, and seven, and eight?
Wait, which, yeah. So I'm sorry. Just before we get off that, can I just ask a quick question? Just, it's curiosity. It looks like the bottom of your swale is 122.
Um...
It, it, what I'm asking could probably be rectified in the, in the field pretty easy. In the, your catch basin looks like the topo line around that's 124.
Yeah, so this is, this is a 126 contour. This is a 128 contour. So we're bringing the water down to the 124 right here. The 122 is on, below it. So we're, we're, if I would do a cut section of this, it would be backyard, berm, and then down.
So, so, so any, any water that accumulates from the 122 against the wall is not going to get to the catch basin?
So see this, see this, this inflection in the contour?
Yeah.
This is actually a high spot right in here.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the low spot. So the water's going to travel right down.
No, I, I see where it's going to get to the 124, but my point is, the other 124 topo line, when it gets beyond that, between that and the wall, that water's going to maintain between that and the wall. It's not going to get to the catch basin.
Right. So from this 124 to the top of the wall is sloping down. That water is going to flow in this direction.
So you'll have a little, I mean, to exaggerate the point, you'll have a little stream there against the wall. I, I just don't know why...
The wall is lower than...
I guess my point is, I don't know why the catch basin isn't the very lowest point, just to pick everything up. I just don't.
Yeah, we can't, the invert down here, if we put it down at the bottom of the slope, it would be too low to get it down to the...
Oh, you, you need 124 just to pitch it where it needs to go.
Yes, right.
So I, again, I agree it's catching the vast majority of it, but you just, against that wall, you're going to have a little damp spot.
The wall's at 120. The top of the wall's at 120.
So this, this is higher than the wall. This, this grade here is going to slope onto the wall and then down.
Yep.
So we, you know, our watershed now would be right along the top of that crest there.
But the, the topo line at the base of your wall says 120 and then it's 122, then 124. So you, you, your wall, the earth, it's your wall, looks like that.
That shouldn't be the case. That, that should be at to the top of the wall. So like this is 116 right here?
Yeah.
This elevation, the top of the wall is 120. It should be something like that, which is this contour right here.
So I suppose what you're saying, Mike, is in a real heavy rain, it's going to overflow that perhaps and come over the wall?
Yeah, from the 122 contour line to the 120 contour line, which I thought was the base of the wall, but you're telling me it's the top of the wall. Yeah, from the 122 to the 120, it'll just flow over the wall.
So we would...
A small area, but...
Small area, right.
I just want to understand it.
But I can look at that to make sure. I can, I can, I can run a cross-section and see how deep the water would be in the, in the channel to make sure that it doesn't just...
Well, in fact, it's not a channel. I, I didn't understand it. I thought it was going from 122 to 120 at the base of the wall. You're telling me it's 122 to 120 at the top of the wall?
Yeah, right.
So there's a little hill that's going to flow over the wall?
That says the, the catch basin.
There's a, there's a high spot between that. So I mean, if I, if I were to do spot shots, this would be 125 back down to 124. So that there would be always a high spot between...
I, I just don't, I just don't think we're, we're connecting here.
No.
But that says the catch basin's at 23.
And I won't belabor this because I don't think it's a significant point. I just wanted to understand it. But if I'm 124 here and I put a drop of water there and that's 122 and that's 120, the drop of water's going to go like that?
Yes. So the water right here...
So for this, everything here, I understood is coming to here.
Yeah.
But everything right here is going to go there.
That's correct. Yeah. So I, I...
I just didn't, I just thought, at first I understood that you were putting the wall there to catch it and get it back to the low, what I thought would be the low point, 124. But you would further explain that. You can't get it to 120, to the lowest point because it, you won't have no pitch to get it where you want to go.
So to answer...
So you've got 99% of way, whatever. I'm, I'm done. I'm clear. I'm clear.
There is, the water, this, there is part of the backyard, if you will, that's grass that will flow in this direction, this 10 feet or whatever that is, from the top of the swale to the top of the confining berm to the top of the wall.
And again, I'm not questioning or arguing what you're doing. I just want to understand it and I do. And you, apparently you've made an improvement on the vast majority of that area and some little bit of it is still heading that way. Gotcha.
Back to the other piece. Cheryl's question.
Yeah, just about the cut and fill over there on lots four, five, and seven and eight.
Before we made this, this revision to lots, I think it was a couple of meetings ago, you brought that, that up above Bill. So what I had done in this proposal was to increase the slope of the common driveway from, from the edge of the cul-de-sac down. So we were able to reduce all the filling in the, in the front and back yards in this whole area from, I believe we started at like 128 and now we're down to 122 in the back. And I believe Chris's cross-sections reflected the new...
The new?
The new grading, yes.
So, so on that new, I have cross-section CC. Tim, do you have that?
Yep.
Because I don't know if they have it with, do you have CC with you, the cross-sections with you? Otherwise, go ahead.
I'll, I'll throw it up. What was last week's date?
It was October...
13th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because section CC, when he gets it up, it's cut right through that area that you're talking about, I believe.
Okay, this is behind, yes, this is, yeah.
And so it's showing over on the left, 133-ish, right, as the new grade?
In the front, yeah. It had to leave down in this area right here. Yep.
So you were saying that that was, that was actually higher than the 133 previously?
It was. And then we also created walkouts in the back.
We talked about, right?
Your suggestion. And we were able to redesign the architecture of the building so that we could still meet the building height by doing that.
Okay. And that applies to, how, how many of those lots there, would you say?
Um, Tim, could you just put back the grading plan? Thanks. So, so it would be lot 15 for sure, lot 14, lot 13, and... So, so it would be lot 15 for sure, lot 14, lot 13, and would have been lot 12, but now we have the basin, the stormwater basin, between that and the ground. So, it's really these three lots right here.
Okay. And lot 16 had less anyway, right?
Lot 16, we were blending into the existing topography.
Yeah, okay. So, I think that, that's much better over there, so, than lots four, five, seven, and eight?
Four, five, seven, and eight, yeah.
Was that reflected in, that was in section BD?
Yeah, so what we, what we really tried to show was what we were, yeah, so we ended up, we ended up reducing the backyard fill over here, but the cuts that were up in this area, we were trying to show you what was happening here, that, you know, the, the lots over here were being cut into the grounds slightly at the top of the hill, and then because of the topography, we was filling on the, on the low side over, over here.
So, by pushing that to a steeper slope of budding the wetlands, there's not an issue there in terms of runoff towards the wetlands?
So, what, what this doesn't really show, Tim, could I ask you to put the grading plan back up? It doesn't show that, and since that time, when dealing with Lisa, we have now incorporated another basin, stormwater basin, at the bottom of that hill. If you slide down that way, Tim...
Would that be on the new plan that we got today?
Yes, it's on the new plan. It's right, it's on the other sheet. It's right, right there. Okay. I can't, I see that.
It's right there.
Oh, it's right there. So, here's the homes that we're talking about here, and we ended up incorporating another bait, long, elongated basin here to intercept the water coming off of these, off of this area, and off the driveway here. You see, we've placed a drainage structure here, and the idea here is that the water coming off the driveway here would be directed to the, off the driveway right into the depression here, and then from here, we pick the water up and bring it to the basin. So, the backyards of these lots will flow into the basin and the driveway, the common driveway here.
So, if, in this section, that basin would be in here?
Uh, yep, at the bottom of the hill, right in here.
Oh, right in there, all right. And so, would it, it sort of creates a trough?
Cheryl, I'm going to put that back up, so we can all...
Yeah, so, it would, it's, it's in this area right in here. He did not, he did not have that...
Have, yeah.
When he did his cross-sections. So, you would see a little blip here, a bump here, if you will, before it, so it would come up and come back and go back down.
So, that would serve to capture it?
Right.
Rather than letting it go into the wetland? Okay.
That is also, if I can add, that's an infiltration basin, which will also, will clean, clean the runoff before it gets to the wetland. Probably not in your domain, but...
Other questions from the board? All right, are there comment, ooh, sorry.
I mean, I had a question on behalf of April, if that's okay?
Yeah, sure.
The email that she sent about Uncwoody Road, there's a lot of high-speed bicycle traffic for people that ride bikes fast. So, I know in, from the perspective of cars coming out, you know, the idea of the colored bike lane to warn people seems good. Is there any possibility for any sort of signage on Uncwoody Road alerting cyclists to a driveway, you know, upcoming? I don't know if it would be in this range, or, or where exactly that would be appropriate to go, but is that something that, is that, is that possible?
Certainly something that we can discuss with DCR. Signage would typically be provided at major intersecting ways. This could be, because there aren't a whole lot of curb cuts along Uncwoody Road, it could be a location where advanced signing is placed, and that will be discussed with DCR during the access permit process.
We're certainly willing to, to do that.
Right, because I, I, I know it's, you know, it's their road and everything, so, you know, we can't necessarily say, and we, the town, can't necessarily say, oh, we should do that, but that's something that April has brought up, and it would be, it would be good to, for that to be on the radar.
You might be able to strongly suggest that if DCR is suggesting that we need to maintain the road, so it may be some opportunity to work with that.
Signing cars and high-speed bicycles crossing.
Well, on, on, on the new road, and, and again, signage on, on the new road just saying, you know, bicycles, watch out. I mean, I, I know the, the, the green, the green paint sort of acts on that. Maybe some signs, I was talking about on Uncwoody Road.
I know you were. No, 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 I know you were.
Oh, so, I mean, okay, I got it.
We could certainly bring that up, you know, as would be the case with any state agency. They're, they're always sensitive to oversigning things as well. It needs to be in character with the functioning of the road, but it's certainly something that this applicant's willing to pursue and implement. So, that'll, that'll be discussed.
Great.
So, so, Tim, just so I'm clear, I understood the signs on Uncwoody to alert the cyclists about the upcoming drive. Did you also then say...
I mean, if there's...
Another sign on the acre street?
Yeah, on, on your street, just, you know...
Coming down?
Pedestrian...
Yeah, I mean, just something saying like, you know, watch out.
But it is... So, a third sign?
I mean, there would be a potential for someone to come down that steep hill, you know, in a hurry in the morning, not stop at the stop sign at the bottom, and sort of do a, you know, a cruise-through stop. And if there's a bike coming along there at 35 miles an hour, they're speeding, first of all, but they, it would be a pretty, pretty bad situation.
I just wanted, that's fine. I just wanted to understand it.
Okay, so anything else from the board or the staff? All right, let's go to the public. Anybody here from the public that would wish to speak to this application? I can't see if Mr. Sweeney has his hand up. He does not. Okay, Mr. Sloan.
Thank you. My name is Joe Sloan. I happen to be on the Milton's Bicycle Committee. So, thanks, Tim, for bringing up the points you brought up, because I can, I don't have to repeat those.
It was all ULI Rising Star April Amaro.
Yeah, exactly. Stressing Tim's point that, that the typical bicycle...
Mr. Sloan, are you speaking as Mr. Sloan, or are you speaking on behalf of the bike committee tonight?
I'll speak as Joe Sloan, because I wasn't aware that this would come up tonight.
Okay.
I identify myself as a member of the bike committee. There has been overall discussion in the bike community about safety concerns on the entire length of Uncwoody Road, but specifically what could possibly be an increased concern with the addition of this road. I had a question first. When you discussed the determination of site distances, is that based on speed limits in part?
It's actually based on measured speed, right? So, the, the regulatory speed here is 35. The actual 85th percentile speed, which is the speed that would dictate statistically what you should be designing for, is actually 44 miles an hour, 42 to 44, and that is the speed that we rely on for those sightlines.
So, did you measure speeds at all? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Radar recorder equipment was placed to record over an entire 24-hour period.
As you probably know, there have been, there have been a number of accidents just in that stretch of, of Uncwoody Road. There was a motorcycle fatality just up closer between this spot and the intersection with, with Harland Street just this year. Previously, there were, there were motor vehicle accidents. I think possibly one with the fatality in that section, the little triangle of land between Harland Street and Uncwoody Road over the past few years. There's a couple of big dead trees there that you might be familiar with. So, it's, generally speaking, it's considered a very dangerous stretch of road. When I mentioned the speed and the sightlines, if there's any way to encourage, and maybe this will, would, would be elaborated on when there is a more detailed plan of what the landscaping would look like there, going a little bit above and beyond what you're required by standards to do in that corner. The other thing I see from that intersection, what's common when you're, when you're bicycling and you come upon a situation like this, is that cars need to poke themselves out into the traffic a little bit more than maybe what's indicated on that, on that drawing. The stop, the, the stop line is indicated a little bit further from the road. It's often common for cars to have to kind of nose out a little bit to get some visibility. And cyclists, again, the, the predominant cyclists along this cycle, section of road are more experienced riders, a lot of people who are training for events and such like that. When you're on your bicycle, you're constantly scanning road conditions and what's ahead of you. You're up and down, and you're up and down, and you're kind of look at these things. So, again, it, it, just an encouragement that if there is any way to go above and beyond what might be required for sightlines and visibility for that stop, given the history of, of accidents that have been in that area, and, and bicy, there have been bicycle and automobile accidents along the stretch of Uncwoody Road where there are no, no roadways entering. So, just in general, the perception among the bike community is that the vehicle traffic, the cars tend to platoon through Uncwoody Road and through the Blue Hills based on the traffic light at, at Canton Avenue. So, cars come through in groups, and there's a NASCAR effect on Uncwoody Road from cars. They get together, and they go faster. They go faster through there, and they don't have to, you don't have to slow down for things, and especially as cars are coming down from the higher elevations of the Blue Hills down on Uncwoody Road. This is the section where they're starting to pay attention to having to slow down and get to Canton Avenue, so...
Yeah, and, and just to address that point, while we show the sightlines in that drawing, it's actually taken to a point 14 and a half feet back of where the travel edge is. And that's a standard, it's established to account for the presence of either a sidewalk, or in this case, a bicycle lane, and a five-foot offset to, you know, where the vehicle would actually be stopped, and then the distance from that stop position along the hood, so to speak, to the driver's eye position. So, so that sightline is specifically accounting for a stopped position that's well back of where that bicycle crossing is, so that you don't have to nose the car forward. And, and, and that is a phenomenon that I'm familiar with. There are many locations in the Commonwealth where you just have to put the grill of your car right up against the travel edge to be able to see what's coming at you. So, we've, we've already designed and accommodated that, knowing that we want this to be ideal, not minimum, but ideal.
And like Tim said, I, I, I support that idea of the, of the pavement marking, and, and possibly the addition of signage that would, that would notify. I mean, education over time, people, residents will understand that there is something there, but people have visitors, and, you know, there's coming and going from there. But I know when, in a more formal situation, when there's a bike path, like a bidirectional, multi-use path, there's signage that indicates that cars have to stop and yield to the cars that are going, this isn't a bike path, it's a, it's a marked bike lane. But again, if there's something that we could do just a little bit more to let people know who aren't familiar with the area that might be coming out of there, that they could expect bike traffic, that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah, no, we, we are more than glad to pursue that with DCR, and, you know, and including potentially some signs on the driveway itself as you're approaching.
Pretty good.
They have to meet certain standards, but we'll definitely bring that up.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the public? Okay, Sweeney.
Good evening, Bob Sweeney, nearby resident of the town farm. I want to commend the board on its deliberation, and I really appreciate your discussing detailed items tonight, because I, I just think that's critical. We're proceeding here for what I call a large project, 23 homes, 30 acres of land. For Pulte, this may not be a large project, because they're Pulte Homes of New England, and they're a very large company, but from my perspective, this is a very large project, and it's going to require a lot of, to me, a lot of detail. At the last meeting that I attended, there was a memo given out 10-7-16, and it had to do with the controversial buffer language. And I think that is an example of why detail and a special permit with clout and teeth is necessary in this situation. For instance, you talk, in, in getting to the 100-foot buffer zone, the Pulte company is calling 40-foot open space owned by the homeowners association, and then the following 60-foot, I referred to it as, it gets to be fuzzy at the last meeting, that's a 60-foot restricted area. If a homeowner in the restricted area violates the rules of the restricted area, it can then be cured, the violation can be cured by the homeowners association. But these would be the very neighbors of the person that was violating it, and those neighbors might not have a problem with the violation. They might want to do it, too. So, I guess what I'm saying is that the original, the bible in this situation needs to be the purchase and sale agreement, which incidentally was signed five years ago yesterday. And I was the chair of the trustees that signed that, and that is an extremely well-thought-out document. Tremendous amount of input went into that by Pulte and by our legal counsel, the then trustees at the time. And I really think that's the bible that we need to operate out of as we proceed in coming up with a, a special permit for this project. And I'm just suggesting that, from my neighborhood's point of view, and I think what's in the best interest of the town of Milton, is that the PNS that celebrated its five-years, fifth birthday yesterday needs to, to be adhered to, and I think the results could then become positive. But I do want to stress that, as you talked about tonight, you got down to some nitty-gritty, street lights, so on, appearance of the entranceway. I think that kind of detail with teeth in it is critical for a successful project and critical for protecting what's in the best interest of the town of Milton.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Mrs. Sweeney?
That's my namesake. I just have a question.
Sure.
If we could go back to Judy Sweeney, 29 Quasipbrook Road, Milton? If we could go back to the picture, Tim, that had that lot four, five, six, and seven with the new basin area? If, I just want to make sure I understand it.
Yeah, we're, wait, oh, I'm on the other one.
The other one? Done the other plan now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just, I just wanted a clarification on the flow for the new basin. So, in those lots, fourth, I guess it's four, five, six, and seven, they're now going to flow down into a, if I understand, into a catch basin that then will move the water over to basin five? Is that correct?
The basin, and Mrs. Sweeney is here.
Yes.
I'm pointing to it right now.
Okay.
Catch basin right there.
No, that's the road.
It's in here?
Yeah.
And there's a pipe that takes that water...
Yeah.
Down to here and into the, this basin right here.
Isn't that basin five that big?
No, you're, the basin that you're familiar with is up here, in this area up here.
Okay, okay.
This is it, right here.
So, on this map, is this the area? Oh, I see, okay. And, and that will flow where?
That flows into this, into the bigger wetland that, that, that's right, right here. Yep.
Okay, all right, fine. All right, that, that's all, I just want a clarification. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the board of the applicant from the public? Okay. So, applicant, sorry, does applicant have anything he wants to respond to that was from what was just said? Any comments?
No, I don't want to belabor the point, but it's just, I wanted to make it clear that it's our position that the, the buffer that is in the purchase and sale agreement to the trustees, and the proposal that is, that is now before the board is, it is our firm understanding and belief that the buffer that we're providing is clearly a buffer that's in compliance with our agreement, so just wanted to...
Want to spend a little time on that? Want to spend a little time on that?
Sure. Well, yeah, I mean, we touched on this document that Mr. Sweeney referenced, and I was wondering if we wanted to spend some time on that tonight, or if we wanted to do that the next meeting, but I do want us to spend some fair amount of time on it.
I agree with that.
We could just kind of introduce it tonight and kind of maybe not get into it in great detail, but just-
Do you have it, Tim, to put up on the screen?
Yeah, there were comments at the last meeting while Tim's getting it.
I made a couple, and I think Alex made a couple.
I made a couple, and I think Alex made a couple. So, just to reiterate, I think under the restrictions in the 60-foot-wide restricted tree-cut buffer strip, there was a suggestion that regrading, no regrading-
And fill.
Or fill be allowed in that area. That was actually suggested by Lisa Eggleston, and it was backed up by someone on the board as well.
Yeah, because it was in my notes.
Yeah. And then permitted acts uses in the 60-foot-wide restricted tree-cut buffer strip shall include, there was a suggestion that cutting or removing of small trees less than four inches in diameter should be something that may come out of that. Fences could come out of that, and plantings, signs in gardens that at least signs come out of that. So, that's just a reminder of what the previous discussion was.
And then I also, just so, may I?
On the first page.
On the first page. Are you getting to that?
Yeah, so on the first page, we had suggested that Milton Woods HOA shall have the authority to cure the violation of the satisfaction of the town enforcement officer, including but not limited to replacement of trees, and it's the responsibility of the individual homeowners on Lot 13 to 23 to maintain the 60-foot-wide restricted tree-cut buffer strips, and I underline that for some reason. I think that the main part on the first page, Cheryl, was the addition of the tree replacement, correct?
Right, well, it's the recourse, right? So, someone removes a tree, it seems as if there should be a recourse if it's not for safety purposes, in other words, a tree that could fall on a property and damage a house or something, that there should be a replacement.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
So, that would-
Yep, that's what I was saying in there, yep.
Yeah, right.
So, perhaps we can start with, I don't know, do you have any feedback as the applicant to those suggestions?
I do.
Okay, great, and then we can go from there.
I do. So, regarding the first item, the regrading and the fill within the 60-foot restricted tree-cut buffer, I don't have any issues with that being added in there. The intent of this area is not for somebody to come in and to regrade it and to fill it and to change its character. That's not the intent. However, the next couple items that we are discussing, the suggestion that fences and signs, so I don't know why the homeowner could not install a fence along their property line or could not install signs within their property, and how by doing so, that would negate the intent of a buffer. If somebody installed a fence, I think that would actually almost increase or enhance the buffer, and so I don't know. So, I would like to keep fences in. I would like to think that our homeowners would, some of them would actually intend and would want to put a fence around the boundaries of their property up to the open space strip. And I can't really think of any signs that they would put up, but I don't know why installing signs on their property would actually affect the intent of the buffer. Maybe they, you know, the one that comes to mind would be, you know, no trust, private property or no trespassing that they might put near where it abuts the open space just in case, although nobody's supposed to be back there. They might want to put a sign to say, hey, this is my property line, please, because it's essentially in the middle of the woods. I don't know why that would-
So, my comment on fences would be, I understand what you're saying. I think one of the intents of the buffer is to sort of preserve this natural buffer in between the properties, so perhaps it's a scale issue on the fence, that the fence should be a delineating fence as opposed to a fence that's obscuring in some way, or a five-foot-high fence that's blocking out a property. That's what I think my interpretation of what the neighborhood's concerned might be, is that this is really meant to be left in a natural state, so a fence that's delineating a property line might be acceptable, provided it didn't have a certain mass to it that carves up the otherwise natural, you know, character.
Having an invisible fence go through the woods, black chain link fence, you can't see it. Move 10 feet away from it, you don't see the black chain link fence.
Or even a, you know, post and rail fence would be fine, but I'm just thinking a natural, you know, a six-foot-high, five-foot-high fence, but I don't know. That's my interpretation.
Yeah, I mean, for me, that would still be an issue as far as what I see as the spirit of the 100-foot buffer. And in my view, a stone wall would be appropriate, more so than a fence, if you wanted some kind of delineation. And if somebody really needed a fence because they had a pet or something, then move it back out of that 100-foot zone, I think. That will be a very, I mean, chain link is one thing, but you're going to have how many different properties, you know, with how many different fence materials potentially?
Black chain link, not regular chain link.
Understood, but still.
You're already getting to a fuzzy area here where you're going to say, if you're going to start trying to develop specifications around what type of fence, yes or no, it's going to, it's getting into a very funny area. But I think to back up a little bit, and I'm just going to be frank and honest with you, Mike, I don't know that what's in the plan today is the spirit of the original 100-foot buffer. With that said, I think you're trying to bring together a great compromise, and I think that's not necessarily a bad thing, that's a good thing. But it's been my understanding all along, even from what I understood from yourself, that there would be no building in this 100 feet. And as far as I'm concerned, if you're starting to put up a fence, that's building. Now, you've put up a six-foot stockade fence, well, now I don't know what the hell you're doing behind it. Well, you weren't supposed to do anything behind it. It's just getting very fuzzy now. It's just, I thought we went from the 40 feet and the 60 feet, no touch, to now we're going to put up fences, and I don't, yeah.
I can see what you said about a sign, a small sign, maybe, but I agree with Mike. I still have a problem with fences. I could see a stone wall, a low stone wall, which would be in character with that property.
I'm a little bit confused about, what kind of sign are people going to put up in the property? No trespassing?
Private property or something like that, yeah.
A little placard on the side of the tree?
I mean, I think we could put something in about the size of the sign, you know, and maybe how it's mounted for that purpose, if that seems reasonable. Alex, we haven't heard from you.
I'm not prepared to discuss this yet, because I haven't given it enough thought. My own feeling is that 60, 40 is probably wrong. It probably should be at least 50/50. And I think that if there is going to be an easement restriction, it has to be tough, and I'm just not, I mean, I don't want to discuss this and have said, well, you were supposed to make all your comments back on the 23rd. I'm reserving my comments until a future time.
Do you have an opinion about the fence versus a wall or versus nothing?
I'm not, really, I think that certain types of fences, depending on use, would be permissible. The use that would enhance the buffer, I mean, I haven't, you know, I haven't totally gotten there yet. I'm thinking about it. I'm just not prepared to say this is what we want.
So, I guess I'd ask the applicant, you're hearing input from the board. There's a couple other things we touched on at the beginning. The other one thing that was stated that I failed to mention at the beginning was there was a statement, I think it was from Mr. Whiteside last meeting, that the legal enforcement language should have teeth in it, and that, you know, we'd like you to take a look at proposing something that really gives a level of enforcement to this document, to the town, for the code enforcement officers. So, perhaps if you could get, you know, if you could respond, if you could hear what the board's saying here, hear what the board's asking for, maybe provide another draft of this prior to the next meeting, which would be the, we usually ask for that the Thursday before. That would give us a chance to look at something and come back to the table, perhaps with better consideration of the second attempt.
Brian, I'd like to see if we can get some feedback from Mr. Flynn on what would be the best way to make this enforceable.
And, Brian?
Tim, could you make that request for us? Thank you.
May I ask, Tim, is this on the website for the town? Yes, okay.
I mean, that's-
So, Mr. Sweeney or anyone else in the audience who had this particular interest, if you could maybe testify at the next meeting about any details of this?
This is on the town website, under Current Projects, Governor Stoughton property, and these documents are all in pretty roughly chronological order of how we receive them. All the dates and descriptions are on there.
And I don't think we're trying to be more difficult with Pulte. We're hearing on many projects in the town that you have restrictions, you give out permits, and there's limited enforceability. So, that's something we're not hammering on you as a single-delt project.
Well, I mean, if we go along with the easement language rather than the open space, that's an accommodation that we're making, and it's simply that we want an easement that works, because there are easements and easements, as you undoubtedly are aware.
Anything else from the applicant this evening?
No.
Okay, anything else from the board? All right. Do I have a motion to continue this to November 10? And let me get a time from our assistant planner. I think on the 10th, we have 7:15 taken right now?
We've got a 7:15, and we've got a 7:30. And did we send the other two to?
Yes.
The 16th?
Could you remind me what the 7:15 and 7:30 are?
7:15 is for a site plan approval at 2 Elliott Street. 7:30 is going to be a definitive subdivision modification for Beechwood Lane, 683 Brush Hill Road. Those are the two that I was talking about.
And when have we done Carrick? Have we scheduled?
Yeah, where did Carrick end up?
I have it down with 11:10.
At what time?
On the 10th, sorry. That's what I have down my notes.
That's when we're going to start?
I'm going to need a-
Brian, I don't think we opened that hearing yet.
Why don't we do?
Oh, you're right, we didn't.
We haven't.
That's why we don't have a time.
So, let's reserve a time slot for them at the-
So, I mean, we could do 7:45 on the 10th.
That's fine, and we can do Carrick last, assuming there's a hearing.
So, Pulte's continued to the 10th at 7:45?
If someone moves that.
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to open the 7:45 public hearing for Carrick Guilty Trust Special Permit for Central Avenue Plan Unit Development 131 Elliott Street, continued from October 13th. And can I have a motion to continue that to November 10 at 8:00 p.m., please?
Hello.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else from the board this evening? We have, on tonight's agenda, we have the Carberry Street, that's moved. We did the 1259, correct?
We have revised agenda. That doesn't have that on it.
That's right, okay.
All right.
I already did the other one. Mr. Whiteside?
Oh, he moves that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.